If everyone can take their seats, we're going to get started with our meeting. Thank you. Good evening. It is six o'clock PM on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone that's here in our council chambers and those that are listening on WCBU. I'd also like to welcome the audience that's watching, cable channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali. Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Seer. Councilmember Gordon Young. Member Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler. Member Regenbach. Councilmember Velpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
You have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Everyone, please join me in stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
We have one proclamation.
Our proclamation recognizes National Radon Action Month. And here to join us in receipt of that proclamation are Jim Emmanuels and Debbie Emmanuels. Can you come to the podium, please? Right there. Whereas radon is a colorless, odorless radioactive gas that may threaten the health of our citizens and their families, January is National Radon Action Month, and all Illinois citizens are strongly encouraged to test their homes for radon. And whereas radon is the second-leading cause of lung cancer in the United States and the leading cause of lung cancer in non-smokers, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency estimates that radon is responsible for approximately 21,000 lung cancer deaths each year. And whereas one in 15 homes across the United States has an elevated radon level and 41% of homes tested for radon in Illinois have high radon levels. And whereas any home in Peoria may have elevated levels of radon, even if neighboring homes do not, an elevated levels pose a serious health threat to residents. And whereas Illinois law now gives tenants rights regarding testing, Illinois statute recommends all Illinois school districts test their school building every five years and identify radon problems, excuse me, identified radon problems can be fixed. And whereas the Illinois Emergency Management Agency and the Office of Homeland Security and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency are supporting efforts to encourage homeowners to test their homes for radon, mitigate elevated levels of radon and build new homes with radon-resistant materials and features. Now therefore I, Rita Ali, Mayor of the City of Peoria, do hereby acknowledge January 2024 as National Radon Action Month in Peoria.
Thank you, Mayor Dr. Rita Ali and Councilman. My name is Jim Emmanuels and I am the Vice President Midwest ARSC and on the Illinois Radon Task Force. Thank you so much for this proclamation. It's important to get the word out. As you said, radon is an odorless, colorless, tasteless gas. It's the second-leading cause of lung cancer. And the only way you'll ever know that you have an indoor radon problem is to test for it. Fortunately, we do have the cure for radon-induced lung cancer by diverting the radon gas to the outside. It's called a radon mitigation system. The story I hear way too often is a loved one has come down with lung cancer and the doctor asked them to test their homes for radon and it came up high. And usually at the end of the conversation, it is, "Why didn't nobody tell me?" And that's what this proclamation helps do. According to EPA, the action level is four pico caries per liter, which is equivalent to 5.3 cigarettes in an 18-hour period. Peoria County has a distinction that we need to acknowledge. According to IEMA, the Illinois Emergency Management, the highest recorded radon ever tested in the state of Illinois was 1,370 pico caries. And actually, we actually own the first spot and the fourth spot in the state of Illinois. We do have a radon issue in this city here. So thank you again for this proclamation. And I would urge you to go back to your constituents and advocate for them to test for it. The Peoria County Health Department, the good news part of this is they have test kits and they actually have grant money for the mitigation systems. Thank you again.
Thank you for making us aware. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the Joint City Council and Town Board Meeting held on January 9th, 2024 as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Graham. Any questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. 24-19 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works with a request to accept the low bid of D. Joseph Construction Company in the amount of $1,792,000 and award a contract for the Public Works Dries Lane remodel. 24-20 is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to deny a request to rezone property from a Class R3 Single Family Residential District to a Class C1 General Commercial District for the property located at 3616 North Sheridan Road. 24-21 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class B1 Central Business District for a Class 2 Tobacco or Alternative Nicotine Product Sales Use for the property located at 311 Main Street. And on your desk, there is a revised communication. 24-22 is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class C1 General Commercial District for a massage parlor for the property located at 4410 North Knoxville Avenue. 24-23 is a communication with request concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to adopt an ordinance approving a special use in a Class R3 Single Family Residential District for a short-term rental for the property located at 5601 North University Street. And 24-24 is a communication from the City Manager, Corporation Council and Director of Public Works with request to adopt an ordinance proposing the West Lamont Avenue Special Service Area. And that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items, Council, to remove from consent? Councilmember Graham?
24019.
Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I was going to say 24019 as well.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
24-19 is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Public Works to request, with a request to accept the low bid of D. Joseph Construction Company in the amount of $1,792,000 and award a contract for the Public Works Dries Lane remodel.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes, this is an overdue expenditure. Many of us were very unhappy when we kind of got stymied in our efforts to design a new office layout out on Dries Lane for our Public Works Department back in 2016 or so, when the funding was withdrawn after completion of just one phase. So we have a lot of remodeled space that needs to be finished and made usable for our staff. And certainly with all the infrastructure projects we've had in this community, it's vitally important that we have a good working environment that can adequately accommodate our employees. Director Powers, I wonder if you could add on or embellish to what I've already said here because I'm going to be so thrilled to vote in the affirmative for this particular expenditure.
Well, it's not often, I don't think, a director gets something pulled from consent that they're going, "Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. I think you did a really good job in providing somewhat of an overview." It actually started in 2012, the planning. If, actually, this is a good opportunity just to invite any and all of you to come to Dries and to see the space. We would love, one, we like to tell you what we do because a lot of people don't get to see that. Again, we often quietly do what we do. But again, when I came here four years ago, hard to believe, that space that you're talking about that we undertook in 2016 has been in that condition because frankly, we didn't have funding. We hit COVID. There's no one to blame. There's a budget matter we had to address. And hence, we've had staff in spaces that were never meant to accommodate a person. They were meant to accommodate labs, vehicles. And it's only because it was conditioned space. It was the only place we could find. The space that we had started, we basically disqualified because we didn't have it conditioned. So a very large, right in the center of our building, is uninhabitable because of that. So it's that, along with just a complete functionality of the building. As you know, we're growing the utility. There's just a number of things that have happened since 2016, Counselor, that Council, Mayor, all of you, just that frankly, we need to do to accommodate workflow, a more welcoming environment. You know, on the exterior side, we've taken on a green infrastructure project as a model for the city. We would just like the compound to reflect, really, I think, the first public building that you see when you come to Peoria. If you think about it, you're coming 74 south. And it's not really south, but you're heading south. And you look to your left and you see our salt barn and then you see our building, especially in the winter. So we need this work done and it is well overdue. I could not concur more, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, I just want to start my comments by saying it sounds like a much-needed project. But I, what does disturb me is, and I think I brought this issue up a couple of years ago, about the lack of minorities that are not involved in this project as a governmental entity. We have a goal of 15% minority participation and I get it. You know, sometimes companies, smaller companies, are not in a position financially. But what I am not sure is whether or not this particular contractor has put forth a good faith effort. At least, you know, there's documentation. But with 3% minority participation, that does not indicate to me that there was a good faith effort put forth. And my question is, when I brought this issue up two years ago, Mr. Manager, we changed, have we done anything differently with regards to how we approach this process? Because for reasons unbeknownst to me, I'm sure maybe some may have to do with the law, minorities and women are not in a position to even compete, especially if they're a smaller company.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing this up. Yeah, in this bid, this was certified by our Chief Diversity Inclusion Officer who runs the EO program. They had six minority and women-owned businesses bidders on the project. They selected three, one minority bidder and two women-owned businesses, to participate as subs on the project. With it, it does total 3.6 of the total percent of the project, 2.6 to a minority contractor, and then 1% to women-owned businesses. Our goals are 10% and 5%. They're goals. They are not requirements. And we can't require, under the law, we cannot require that you meet a certain percentage to be minority-owned or women-owned businesses as part of that project. We have been working, we've been working very closely with the NAACP, with the Peoria Black Chamber, our purchasing team, our Public Works team. We're planning on an event in March where we're going to be at the Civic Center to talk about how we can try and grow more minority businesses and more minority contractors. This project actually had two minority businesses that submitted as primes for the project. They were not selected because they were not the low bid in this. And when we're doing, when we spec out construction work, we do have to go with the lowest responsible bidder. So in this instance, staff feels that this was an appropriate bid. We feel that the good faith effort was met by the contractor as they tried to fill certain slots. Much of this work by D. Joseph is going to be self-performed anyways as they go through that work. And then lastly, you know, we're continuing our efforts as a city to try and grow the number of minority contractors. I think that's one of the challenges. If you talk in the construction community, they would say, for Public Works jobs, for people that are participating in the state's apprenticeship program, which is a requirement for us in terms of doing this work, you have to be, not only do you have to be a minority contractor, but you have to be part of the state's apprenticeship program to do public works jobs over $100,000. That becomes a challenge, is finding a number of contractors to do that work.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but 3%, and you said you have met with the NAACP, that does not indicate anything has changed. And this problem has been going on since before we hired Ms. Green, so I cannot put that on her. This is a systemic process that I believe needs to be changed. I mean, two years ago, when I brought it up, nothing has been done to rectify it. So I cannot support this in good conscience. 15% goal and we only have 3% participation. I, it just doesn't, I can't support it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, for your inquiry. I do think that, Manager, that council needs to be bought up to speed at, with some of the developments that have taken place in regard to minority procurement efforts, not just the event that's taken place in March at the Civic Center in conjunction with local partners like the Black Business Alliance, the Illinois Black Chamber, the Small Business Development Center at Bradley University, and the NAACP. But that work that staff has done in being able to have a system that now gives us information, that tells us where we are with regard to minority procurement and all the different categories of procurement. And so I think now's the time, sometime fairly soon, maybe Ms. Green, Chief Green, can make a presentation and give, bring everybody up to speed.
Happy to.
If I may, Madam Mayor, I would like a report back. With the amount of money the city is spending on capital projects, has spent, will spend over the next year or two, 3% is just incredibly low and very disturbing. Could we get a report back on minority participation? If we haven't done much better than 3%, we've got work to do.
No, we'd be happy to.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, and, you know, I think through, with the help of Director Craddy, that information is now at our fingertips, but you don't know how to get it. So you need to be provided with some direction on how to really access that information. Thank you. Councilman Graham, did you have a motion?
Yes, I would so move.
Seconded by Councilmember Regenbach. Any other discussion? Cast your ballots. Motion passes with one nay. Jackson. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. 24-25 is a communication from the City Manager with a request to approve a spending plan for the remaining $1,200,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds for violence prevention activities.
Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At Council's request, we said that we would come back to you this evening with our recommendations regarding the violence prevention funding. And I'd like to turn the floor over to our Community Development Director, Joe Doolin, who's worked with the Police Department and the administration to just put together some of the recommendations we have for you here this evening.
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. So based after the discussion in the last policy session and looking at where we're at with the current programs that we had funded in round one and round two, city staff came up with a recommendation to try a different approach with this next and final round of funding, specifically looking at projects and programs we can roll out to the neighborhood. You know, we've had a lot of funding that's gone to nonprofits. They still have those funds that they haven't spent, even though we originally intended for them to last through the end of 2023. The funding is still there, so the programs will continue through 2024 while they wrap up and finish their programs. But specifically, we wanted to look at what could we do a little different to try to help with crime in neighborhoods? So the recommendation in front of you really looks at kind of ways specifically focused around environmental design that can reduce kind of crime in neighborhoods. While this won't necessarily kind of be the end-all to anything, it just adds to all the additional efforts. Specifically, the request puts $500,000 over the next two years into alley and porch lights in neighborhoods. We are going to look, work in conjunction with the Police Department to look at the different hotspots throughout the community, those with the high crime rates, and really go door-to-door trying to encourage people to sign up for the program to get a new porch light, brighter porch light, if they don't have one, a backdoor light. And then if they have a detached garage, an alley light on top of that. And think, when you think of all the people that could sign up, if a large percentage of the block does, it can provide a significant, much more lighting for the neighborhood. So we will be doing that over the next two years. While we indicated in there that the program will last for two years, we're going to try to spend it as quickly as possible to get the lights up as quickly as possible. Then the second aspect of it is really kind of looking at vacant properties and kind of vegetation that is causing issues in our neighborhood. You know, this might be something that you don't think of that will necessarily deter crime. But when you think about overgrowth, trees, scrub weeds, things like that, it provides a huge opportunity for those who want to break the law to be able to hide, to be able to get away from things. It distracts, takes away from natural lighting that could come into the neighborhood and the community. So we will be working kind of with staff to clear cut vacant lots we've already taken down, look and see if there's trees or things like that blocking streetlights that are already up, clear cut back some of the vegetation in the alley so people don't have a place to hide, really trying to light up an area, light up a neighborhood, make it less appealing for someone who wants to go break in for cars, have an easy getaway. So that's what we'll be specifically focusing those hotspots as well. So with that, happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Director Doolin, for bringing this forward. I think this is a good reflection of where the council wants to go in its next series of funding as we look to combat violence in our community. I hope our listening audience demonstrates and understands our holistic view of trying to address this issue. We've invested previously in programming and really trying to invest in our citizens to address this issue. And now we're looking at some environmental ways in order to combat the complex issue that is violence in our community. So I just want to commend you and your staff for the innovation and bringing these forth and look forward to seeing these implemented through the various hotspots in our city as we look to combat violence in our city. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of questions, Director Doolin. First of all, the, these vacant lots that you speak of, are these city-owned vacant lots or county-owned vacant lots?
A large majority of them probably will be, yes.
Are there any private ones?
I think we'll focus on, I mean, most of the vacant lots that we see in our community, unfortunately, we own now, which is a strategy one of you took with the land bank, which is good. So a majority of the ones that we will do the work on, we own, just because unfortunately, we own them.
I understand that and I appreciate that. I was a little, I was wondering whether, if there are private vacant lots that present a problem, whether we can go after them or not.
Yeah, I think specifically in the hotspots, in the hotspots, we'll take an approach where there are within the code things we can require a property owner to do. I think this money gives us the flexibility. I mean, the reality in the code enforcement world we deal with every day, our trees are incredibly expensive to take down. And someone who is of even moderate income, sometimes doesn't have the $1,500, $2,000, $2,500 to take a tree down, that might really open up a neighborhood. I think what this program allows us to make those decisions, not necessarily based on the code, but maybe working with some of those individuals. But for the most part, you know, the investor-owned properties, things like that, if it's something they should be taking care of, we'll just make them take care of it. But I think this gives us the flexibility in the hotspots of the ultimate goal of, what can we do to clean it up, to make sure that the natural lighting gets in? And if we have to take down a tree on a private lot because maybe the person who lives there can't afford it, I think that's what we'll try to do with this money as well.
Thank you for that. I'd also like to say that, as Councilmember Allen said, I think that the, many of the, many of the programs proposed and funded and whatnot that we have, as soon as the money runs out, it's done. What you're proposing here tonight are, except for fast-growing trees, we will spend the money today, but the effect will continue on for quite some time. And that's, I'm just very much in favor of that. And, Madam Mayor, I would move to approve.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few questions, Director Doolin. Number one is, how much money have we invested? Number one is, how much money have we invested so far in this program?
In the one proposed to you tonight?
Before tonight.
Very little. I mean, we maintain vacant lots now.
No, that's not my question. How much money? We've had votes before this meeting tonight. What was the total package for the prevention, the violent prevention activities?
The first round, we approved $700,000, and then the second round was 1.5 million.
Okay, so that's my question. So we're looking at 2.2 million dollars basically so far, right? So it'd be 3.4 total. So let's talk about the 2.2 million dollars. Last report I saw, very small percentage of the money's been invested. So, and when I talk to my colleague about that, I mean, we're all seeing the numbers, talk to us a little bit about how much time they have to invest the money or spend the money, and what will be the matrix to determine the success of this money invested, 3.4 million dollars?
Well, I will answer that question, but the programs are being managed by the Police Department. I think kind of going back to the original thought in the application process, they put specifically in the RFP what sort of metrics that they need to report on to sort of the success of the program. And so they have that data from them. Your first question about kind of how much money has been spent?
A very small percentage of the money's been invested so far.
Correct. And I think probably an underestimation on kind of city staff's part about how quickly, you know, specifically in the application, we asked for new programs. We wanted something that people weren't doing in our community because we didn't want to just fund, be a funder of existing things. And I think we probably underestimated the ability for nonprofits to get approved, launch a program, hire people to do the work. I think kind of what the Police Department would tell you, they're starting to see that money going out, they're starting to see those programs in place because they've had the staff that's been hired to do it now. I think that it was very lofty of us to enter in a grant agreement and think they would spend the money in a year when they launched a brand-new program. That just probably wasn't a real expectation we could have put on them. And now that they have those going, I think we'll start to see more results from that.
So does your staff share information with other cities of our size for these types of programs? Because I'm just questioning a little bit, okay? Seriously, how much success will we have when I look at, okay, we're going to spend, I don't know, $350,000 on removing, excuse me, removing trees? I'm having a hard time answering those questions from my constituent that calls it, what, how do we fight crimes with just by, no, removing, no, clean up our vacant lot, basically?
Yes, I think my counter to that would be, if you are worried about your safety, would you rather kind of walk in a really dark, dense area of a forest, or would you rather walk on a soccer field? And I mean, I think that's what we're trying to do with this money, is to take down the ability for people to hide behind things, to lighten up an area. Is it something that drastically impacts something overnight with violence crime? Probably not. But I think the crime you're seeing in our community, specifically related to car theft, I mean, they, and the chief can jump up if he wants, but criminals look for areas that are attractive to commit crime. And dark spots, places where you can hide, places where you can get away easily, that's what they're looking for. By clear cutting these lots, you're doing a multitude of different things. You're not only impacting crime, but you're really improving the character, the look of the neighborhood. People take more pride in their neighborhood, they want to be more involved, they report things. It's why we have code enforcement, it's bringing that pride to the neighborhood so when they see issues, they report things. And then your first question about kind of the measurement and the success of those programs, unfortunately, with crime, it doesn't, not something that happens overnight, and the programs that were launched, a lot are trying to address some of those root causes. I mean, so you're not going to see a drastic impact overnight. It's really investing in, a lot of the programs invested in youth, and it's hopefully the long-term impact where you can see, track the youth that were in the program six, seven, eight years from now to see that they made progress and these programs helped.
It's hard to hear from that corner, but I think the question you were asking about is crime prevention through environmental design? Yes, I think it's very important. And again, it's another tool for us, but it's more importantly is really educating our homeowners, our landlords, our property managers, and what that really looks like. Not just in lighting, but, I'll give you an example. When you have a sidewalk in front of your home that walk, that goes up to your steps, when you have flowers set on the side of them, or planters set on the side of them, in your mind, it tells you, I have to walk on that sidewalk and not walk through the grass, right? So you're controlling access through the design of how you designed your landscape. That's part of all of that. Lighting, again, is very important. Again, it's just another tool, but we got to educate, one, educate those key people that I've talked about, landlords, property owners, property managers, and it's just, it's just part of the bigger picture of lighting, cameras, neighborhood organizations, all of that falls into crime prevention through environmental design and what we would call part of our landlord training and nuisance properties and abatement.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Director Doolin. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Doolin and Chief, for the comments thus far. I just want to offer my enthusiastic support for this concept. I think the report we got from the Police Department two weeks ago on the violence prevention to date shows that we have a lot of, a lot of good things in the mix right now. And you look at some of the names of the organizations involved, Dream Center, the Health Department, Big Brothers Big Sisters, Goodwill, Friendship House, the YMCA, goes on and on. These are organizations that have a proven track record. And Director Doolin, if you would just reiterate the fact that the round one, the $700,000 that went out first was to be spent by the end of last year, correct?
I think the grant agreements, yeah, were about a year, correct?
So we are allowing them another 12 months to continue the work that they've begun, correct?
Sir.
And I think that's important to note because, doing my math and take that for what it's worth, there's still a little over $400,000 in that first tranche to be spent, so.
Actually, Councilman, can I correct you on that? I mean, updated numbers as of today, there's only about $60,000 left. So the timing of when documents have been submitted, there's only about $61,000 left.
The most recent report we were presented had 400.
I understand. I'm saying that as of today, because you got that report.
I would appreciate seeing how that's all been gone out, because that's, I think, one of the frustrations that some of us have, is that we haven't been kept up to speed as the money has been going out. So my point is, there's still money to be spent, it's still going out. What about the second tranche then, Mr. Manager? Do you got numbers on that, too?
There's, I don't have the data on the second tranche because that data, that is still open, but we'll get you up-to-date numbers on those as well.
Well, on the report we got from the police on January 8th, the funding was 1.5 million, and there was about 200,000 had been spent. So there's more than that, you think?
There may be. Again, part of the, the largest chunk that came in was from the Health Department that had exhausted all of their $250,000 from the first round. So that was, that was exhausted. That changed that number considerably from that period of time. There was others from some of the other, other agencies that received funding in that first tranche. But we'll get you updated numbers this week for what's been spent to date that has been processed.
Well, maybe when you get those big expenditures, you could inform us live instead of waiting till we ask for it, because that, that exasperates the frustration. And I'm trying to be supportive of it, and now you're making it more difficult. My point was, we have money allocated, we have good organizations doing good work. I think my two colleagues on either side of me are the other council members who work in districts that have alleys that have a lot of these problems that perhaps aren't as evident in the neighborhoods north of War Memorial. And I think it's really important for us to see that concentration where the hotspots are. And we got a report from Jacob Muschan in the Police Department immediately after that last meeting when we talked about some of these environmental things. And I think this is really going to let the people in the neighborhoods know that we hear their concerns, that we see the frustration, and, and what a perfect analogy, Director Doolin. I'd much rather walk across a soccer field in the middle of the night than through a forest. So if any council members at large or other district members would like to see what a difference in impact this can have, I think the three of us would be happy to show you firsthand that the alley lighting is going to be critical and that scrub tree removal that sounds, you, please don't roll your eyes at that because that's going to be an impactful thing for the folks in the neighborhoods. And appreciate the, the action before us tonight, and I definitely will be supportive. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a little bit conflicted about this proposal, and it's not because I don't believe in environmental design deterring crime. I found, I found a meta-study from the American Journal of Preventative Medicine finding that these can decrease robberies between 30 and 84 percent, and it makes sense. It's called the broken window theory. Neglected properties are often seen as opportunities for people looking to commit crimes, not only to, you know, commit it out of sight, but then to hide after. So I mean, this does make sense, but I don't like getting away from, you know, trauma-informed counseling, mentorship, programs like that, that are designed to help people. I think that's what we've been mostly allocating funds toward in the past. That's, you know, it's kind of a new concept, it's a newer concept in terms of anti-violence funding. The City of Philadelphia is doing it right now, they've allocated a lot more money than we have. They did just have an evaluation of their results, and 75 percent of people involved with those programs felt safer in the community, 77 percent improved their situation after participating, 86 percent were satisfied with the programs of the counseling and the mentorship. So I, I mean, you know, I don't think, I don't think they're at odds with each other, but you know, one, one can prevent people from being re-traumatized, you know, by being a victim of a crime again, whereas, whereas the counseling, you know, helps, helps people recover. And, you know, what you see often is revenge killings, you know, you killed my friend, you killed, you killed my family member, and, you know, people don't know how to, how to process that trauma. And so, you know, hurt people hurt people. They, they often act out because they don't know any, any other different way. So, I mean, I see what we're doing here, I understand the utility of it, I think it will work. And I am encouraged that we still have a lot of funds yet to spend from the first couple tranches for, you know, the counseling aspect. I think these have to work in unison. But, yeah, I mean, it's a good idea, and throughout the rest of this year, we will see the rest of that money spent. I think, I think both of these are going to work for a better PR. And I, you know, I will say that, you know, counseling, obviously, when it runs out, you know, the effects of it don't run out necessarily because these are people who are going to go on with the rest of their lives, you know, in a better spot, better position. So, so I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Clearly, we need both. Councilwoman Gordon Young? Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to commend the work that's being done, and I am a huge proponent, of course, of counseling, but also think that we need a holistic approach. And if we're going to cite research, the research, there's a plethora of research that proves that green spaces or environmental protection helps our citizens. Not only removing some of those barriers, but also creating a higher quality of life. And so when we're removing trees or removing brush, we're removing those blind spots, and that's important. I do have a question in terms of the, the process. I know that we're talking about hotspots, but I'm also concerned, and maybe that's going to be later on, about residents who, perhaps their house is not a hotspot, but they have those areas that are dark or could potentially, you know, be a location that people who are committing crimes would move to. Is there a process for that?
Yeah, I mean, I think when we looked at this, unfortunately, we don't have enough funds to put alley lights and street lights for the whole, alley lights and porch lights for the whole city. So really focusing on those hotspots. I think the reality is, you know, we will try to get this money out the door in those hotspots, but if funding still exists, I think we'll expand the hotspots. I mean, I don't know how crime mapping works, but I'm sure there's a hotspot and then a hotter spot. And I think, you know, keep going from there, trying to find, to get that information out there. I think that if it works, we see some changes. I think it's definitely something for us next year in the budget when we're making budget decisions about programs like this, to open it up larger. Ten, 12 years ago, we used to have an alley light program that was citywide, and then funding goes away, comes back. So I think, you know, with this funding, we thought to focus on the hotspots, but absolutely look at if we go everywhere in the hotspots, we'll expand that until we get all the lights out.
Okay. And then I just, one more comment. I was really pleased to hear the inclusion of accommodating people who may have private property but can't afford to remove those trees or whatever that barrier is. I think that's important as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You're welcome. Councilmember Grab?
Thank you, Mayor. I think this council is able to walk and chew bubble gum at the same time. Most nights, we can do that. And that's why, not only are we going to probably pass this by a pretty good margin, but we also weighed in with our state lawmakers just a few days ago about what we're going to do about the relatively small number of people in our community who repeat offend, and that would include both adults and juveniles. And we asked for strengthening of penalties to get these vicious criminals off our streets. Because the vast majority of people in this community are law-abiding, we are failing in a very important duty, and that is removing people who are dangerous, who prey on others, effectively removing them. And that's why we didn't call for a repeal of the Safety Act. We asked for some amendments to be made to that and also strengthening of other laws as relates to vicious criminals who repeatedly offend. I've talked to the chief, and we've heard from him, about some of the wave of juvenile crime that we've had just in the past few months, number of shots fired, et cetera. We have an honor roll, maybe I should call it a dishonorable roll, of about three dozen kids who are completely out of control, who will kill you and kill one another. So I don't want you, Councilman Seer, and not singling you out, to be surprised that this will not do a miracle. However, it's one more tool we can add to our arsenal in dealing with the crime in this community, and we have the money to do it. I think, I think it's a great opportunity to find out if some of these programs will actually work for us. But we have sent the message to our state lawmakers. I hope they're listening to us. We gave them a laundry list, and I'm going to vote for this. And by the way, Councilman Vespa, I appreciate the fact that you brought up the broken window theory. For a while, there were pseudo-intellectuals in this country that said, oh, there's nothing to that. It doesn't matter if you have everything ramshackle, broken down, broken windows, you name it, broken down cars everywhere, et cetera. Doesn't matter. Optics doesn't matter at all. It's meaningless. You shouldn't be talking about broken windows. You're imposing middle-class values. Yeah, I've seen that argument before, and it carries no weight with this councilman. And so, yeah, the broken window theory is real, and we're trying to address some of these things, and there is something to environmental design. And we're going to be doing environmental design, I'm not going to wander downtown as well, trying to stimulate business. So designing our spaces and cleaning up our spaces does have a psychological impact. And, you know, we had horrible people who are responsible for the deaths of millions who understood the concept of environmental design. It was no accident that we had people like Adolf Hitler having his rallies at night. Lighting, very important. People will do things under the cloak of darkness that they would not do if, under the full view of everybody and with a lot of light. So I think we're So, I, I think we're, we're doing the right thing here. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just another question or two about, I, I'm, I'm just thrilled about the lighting and the, the vacant lot thing I, I hadn't thought about very much, and, but I asked my question I had prepared. But since, first of all, is maintenance of city-owned properties normally the province of the Community Development Department?
The Public Works Department handles public properties.
Okay. Is it safe to say that many of these city-owned properties are out of compliance with our environmental rules?
No. I mean, the Public Works staff, I think, two years ago, council made the decision to increase the mows up to a pretty significant point, so they cut them every two weeks, very thankfully. We like to keep our lots in compliance, so I don't hear from private property owners when we make them cut their lines. I think what we don't do the best job is kind of removing scrub trees, trees, we don't clear-cut lots. We've never had the budget to, and this will allow us to do that.
Okay, so, I guess what you're implying there is that, once this money runs out, we're, we're going to continue to have a problem of scrub stuff and, you know, overgrown things in our city-owned lots, you know, beyond the mowing?
Yes and no. It's much cheaper to cut a lot that doesn't have a tree in it, doesn't have scrub trees. I think if, I think what we'll do with this money is the lots that we go through and clear-cut, I don't want to speak for Public Works, but you can do some treatment to get them so they don't grow back. And so, the goal would be going into, to make sure that we're not having to do it every year, you can make sure to spray, you can make sure to keep it maintained, so you're just cutting the grass, so you're not having to go back and remove scrub trees. You know, most, most of the time with the city-owned lots, the scrub trees that exist or the overgrown trees that were scrub trees at one point, we inherited, they were there when we got the house demolished and abandoned, and just did not have the funding to really dedicate to clear-cut the lot. And so, this kind of gives us that ability to go back and fix that.
Okay. I, uh, thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a quick comment, and I just wanted to echo what my colleague, Councilmember Grab, said. This is money that is well-spent, this is, anti-crime-fighting efforts is a long-term, comprehensive approach that will take years to do. But I just want to add, two years ago, when I got elected, I was complaining, hollering and screaming about the amount of tires that were dumped all over, parts all over the county, but in particular, the problem was epidemic on the south side. And since that time, I have been talking, and the mayor, and we've, the city's collaborated with Ameren, the alleys have been lit, we have not seen the problem, at least to the degree we had seen it two years ago. And that's, and I, and I can attest to that, because I've gone out with kids during the summer, but it was not unusual for us to go in an alley and find 25 tires. We had a situation on Treewind, this was a few years ago when I was reporting, somebody had broken a window in a abandoned house, and I got this information from code enforcement, Glenda, before she retired. There were tires in every single room on every floor of that two-story house. So, what I'm saying is, this is, by lighting the areas, by keeping the brush cut, that sends the message to folks that we're paying attention, we're watching, and don't think you can come in here and just dump on our community, because we're paying attention. And so, I just would like to applaud you all. I don't think we have enough money to do what we need to do, but I've, as I've always said, a clean neighborhood, a safe neighborhood is conducive of a healthy neighborhood. So, I would just like to commend you on your job that you've been doing, and I hope that this won't take away from your efforts in those parts of the community where we have an enormous amount of vacant lots. Areas where houses once stood are now darkened and unsafe if you come out and drive in some of these areas at night. So, I just appreciate the work that's been going on over the last two years, and I hope that, for the sake of our seniors and, and others who don't have garages that are attached to their homes, that we can make them feel safe once again, when they're able to go out and put their garbage out, or go out and get in their car at night. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, no more lights. Director Doolan, I like what I see here from you and your team. I'm a big proponent, proponent of environmental changes or design to improve crime reduction. I think it is a long-term game, but it certainly has to be a holistic approach, and this is going to help. We don't have any more discussion, it's been a great discussion. We have a motion on the floor and a second, so I think we're ready. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash twenty-six is a communication from the City Manager and Chief Information Officer with a request to approve a sole-source four-year license agreement with IT savvy for Barracuda's email protection, cloud archiving, and impersonation protection software in an amount not to exceed $198,678. This requires two-thirds vote of the councilmember, members voting, no less than six.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Information Systems Director, Jessica McKean.
Good day. So, this is to protect us, the, so we've had this before, but we're adding a couple new features, and we're signing a long-term agreement to maintain the pricing. I, and one of the most important things I think we're adding is impersonation protection. Everyone on this council has emailed us about getting gift cards, discreet emails sent to Merrily, so this will help us prevent that.
Council Hayes?
Thank you. As this is sole source, and there's 10 members present, it'll require seven affirmative votes to pass the matter today.
Seven, okay. Questions from council? Council, Councilman Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to remind everybody a little bit, tell us, Mr. Hayes or Mr. Manager, tell us about this, this money is in the 2024 budget. Why does it take six votes, or seven, or eight votes, if it's already in the budget? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Seer. The council rules provide that when we don't put matters out to bid, there's certain exceptions. But if one of those exceptions, if those exceptions don't apply, in order to award a sole-source contract, it requires two-thirds of the members voting, and not less than six, if, there's fewer here. So, this is why it requires a supermajority, it's part of our purchasing ordinances and vote ordinance that are within the council rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Velpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question on the, the code that you received, so the, so is, do we have 35,000 computers, is that how, we have to interpret that?
Thirty-five thousand.
So, it says in the quotation?
Oh, that's, um, the per-year pri, like, it's the per-year price. Is that what you're asking?
So, the quantity is what?
So, there are, we're getting agreement, we're getting three services with, with Barracuda, and the annual price will be $49,669 for those services.
I'm, I'm, I'm referring to the quotation.
The quote itself, do you have the quote? The quote itself is, the quantity is, it's a monthly subscription. So, there's about 3,000 computers covered with the monthly subscription, so I think that's what it, what it references, is there's 35,000 monthly subscriptions that are being purchased.
So, basically, we are purchasing per system, that means per user, you're going to purchase. Does this system don't give a group plan?
Yeah, this, this is the plan, and we already have Barracuda in place to protect our email, and to store it in the cloud, and to back it up, so this is just adding additional features and then a long-term commitment.
Thank you. This is only for my clarification, because it's so confusing to see one user, one user, one user, then you have multiple quantities, you know, multiplied with the unit price, so I just wanted to make sure that I understand correctly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Seer?
Motion approved, Madam Mayor.
Seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director McKean. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash twenty-seven is a communication from the City Manager and Director of Community Development with a request for the following. A, approve a grant award in the amount of $1,250,000 in home funds to Peoria Opportunities Foundation and Churchview Garden Homes LLC for the construction of Churchview Gardens. And B, adopt an ordinance approving the redevelopment agreement with Peoria Opportunities Foundation and Churchview Garden Homes LLC to be located in the South Village Tiff District. And on your desks, there is a handout with a revised RDA page.
Thank you. Yes, we go directly to Director Doolan.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as many of you recall, a while ago, Peoria Opportunities and Pivotal came to the city of Peoria for zoning changes specifically related to the projects that they were submitting to IDA for tax credits. The great news is that they received the 9% tax credits for the Churchview Garden Homes. I think in the earlier discussion about violence prevention, one thing we really didn't focus on or mention is quality affordable housing and what that can play in a role with violence prevention. And this returns and adds 47 units of quality affordable housing to the 61605 area. It's located in the South Village Tiff, and when you look at the history of the Tiff, it hasn't seen any major development since it's in, it came about. And I think this represents private development funded with, with some taxpayer dollars, obviously, for affordable housing project, but it's a property tax-paying, property that will be in the Tiff generating increment in the future, and then once the Tiff's over, generating increment for the taxing bodies after this. I think when you specifically look at this project and the journey it's come, it, it really shows the, the fantastic work of, of my staff, from the land-banking efforts to the code enforcement efforts, to get us to a point where we've accumulated property enough to attract a developer, from our planners who worked with IDA on the housing study that gave the additional points to attract the affordable housing development. So, it just really shows the work that, that the community development staff has done throughout the years to bring affordable housing to the city. The specific request is for $1.25 million of home funds. Because the city of Peoria is an entitlement community, we get an allocation of home funds every year that specifically has to go towards affordable housing projects, and that's what that money is. Part B is the RDA with the developer, because they're a property tax-paying biz, property, they're requesting a Tiff financing deal. This one's slightly unique to the ones we traditionally do, due to the way the financing works with the tax-credited projects. This is kind of an upfront payment, so they can close on the property, but over the life of, of the Tiff that exists, they'll actually end up paying over $600,000 in property taxes back into the Tiff with the money. So, happy to answer any questions. Jane Genzel for Peoria Opportunities Foundation is here, she's the local partner in the project. I think Jane's work in the East Bluff to bring affordable housing up there speaks for the quality that, that will be created with this, and hopefully, if any developers or housing developers are listening to our meeting, they know that, that with the land-banking efforts that continue throughout Peoria, we hope to have many more opportunities in the future for these tax-credit projects to bring more quality affordable housing to Peoria. Happy to answer any questions, I think Jane would as well.
Thank you, Director, and Ms. Genzel for being here, and you and your entire staff. I follow this project very closely from the very beginning, and I'm excited about the result that we're moving forward. The, we saw during map restructuring, 5,000 residents left the first district to move to other areas of the city, moving north. And I'm convinced that part of that migration came from the lack of affordable housing that was available on the south side of Peoria. So, this is an opportunity for family housing, new construction within the south side of Peoria. So, I'm very excited about this project. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just would like to echo your sentiment and say that this is, will fill a much-needed void. We have people who don't necessarily want to move too far out, but as you had mentioned, with the lack of affordable housing stock, this will begin to address that need. So, with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to go ahead and make a motion, item number twenty-four dash zero-two-seven, A, be approved.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Grab. Continued discussion, Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Doolan, I just want to offer my thanks also to the land bank team with Matt Smith, because that's, that's something that, when we established that, was very much an unknown, and there's lots of questions and people wondering what the benefit is going to be of that. I think this project shows a tremendous value, so hats off to Matt and his team there. Also, Councilwoman Jackson, I have to say, congratulations, this is really exciting to see, and seeing Jane Genzel in the back just makes me smile. The work that POF has done under Jane's leadership in the East Bluff has been so impactful, and affordable housing is something that we still are wrapping our arms around as a community, I think, but projects like this go a long way in reaching that goal that we've set as a council, so, thank you, POF, thank you, Jane, thank you, Director Doolan, and again, congratulations, Councilwoman. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Grab?
Director Doolan, I believe the council moved this forward before we had two new members elected, or two new at-large people, and I believe they made a presentation that night, and they provided some very interesting information about how they remain involved in the project after it's built. They just don't build something and then go away, and they had some statistics for us as to where they've done development in other communities across our country, and where they continue to be managing those, those units. That impressed me a great deal. And I know, Council Jackson knows this, we have a tremendous amount of private investment just a stone's throw from here, right down by Lucas Steel, one of our oldest family-owned businesses, down by the bridge by one of our fantastic South Korean investors. And so, this is all moving in the direction that the council wants this area to move, and as our mayor said, we can't continue to lose thousands of people to that part of town, we need to repopulate it. And this is a huge step, Council Jackson, in that direction, and thank you for your efforts on this. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A comment and then a question. First, I think this is a wonderful project and a much-needed project to have quality affordable housing in, on the south side of Peoria. I know that there has been a lot of concern of area residents with there not being quality single-family homes. Can you speak to the specifics, like the requirements of this particular money, or this, these funds for this project, just for some clarity?
Yeah, so, part A, the home funds, we do every year set aside some of the home funds for single-family. It's a, it's a CHODO application where they specifically build single-family, that's where you've seen the Habitat Houses over the years. We plan to release that same funding and specifically talk- and specifically talk to our partners who are doing that to build homeowner Habitat for Humanity with that group of funding. Haven't released it yet because we were hoping the federal government would pass the budget, and there's an earmark in there that will help with the program. So we're hoping that will come down in 2024. So we try to approach both. Unfortunately, with single-family housing, the subsidy needed to make a project work is much larger sometimes than an apartment building or townhouses like this project. And IDA doesn't fund a significant amount of single-family home projects because the costs are just so much higher than can be recouped. So that's where it comes in with, you know, probably we've averaged three or four Habitat Homes over the last six or seven years. If you go through Madison, Monroe, down in the North Valley, and then in the East Bluff, too, we've put quite a few Habitat. And the good thing about that project is they are owner-occupied. So hopefully, the federal government will keep the earmark in there, and then we'll be able to add our home funds into that and to hopefully get some new owner-occupied, single-family homes in this area as well.
Thank you, Director Doolin. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Possibly near McKinley School.
Not near anymore. There is no McKinley School any longer.
The former space of McKinley School. Right. Thank you for that. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I was extending my thanks, I missed someone. I see Catherine Murphy sitting in the background. And she is the one who makes these home funds, makes sure they're spent appropriately and accurately. And the work she and her team do, I think, is oftentimes underappreciated. So I saw you back there, Catherine, and I want to make sure we tell you thank you for your participation in this project as well.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy is amazing. Okay. We have a motion to approve item A. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make motion that item number B, under twenty-four dash zero-two-seven, be approved as mentioned.
And that's seconded by Councilmember Grayup. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Congratulations, Councilwoman Jackson. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash twenty-eight is a communication from the City Manager and Assistant City Manager with a request to adopt an ordinance approving the redevelopment agreement with Wagner Properties, Inc. for 1,001 Southwest Adams Street to develop a commercial and residential mixed-use development in the Warehouse District.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have with us our Economic Development Manager, Debbie Van Sickle, and she's going to walk through this proposed redevelopment agreement.
Thank you. This proposal is for the former Chick Manufacturing Building at 1,001 Southwest Adams, which was the largest manufacturer of women's aprons in the early 1900s, but it has been vacant for years. The developer is proposing the original 40,000 square feet to be 22 residential condos with balconies, garden-level space, private parking. Then the vacant lot adjacent to that building, they're proposing what would be the first new residential construction from the ground up in that area. They're proposing floor, four floors of residential units with 62-bedroom apartments, 16-one-bedroom apartments, two garages, over 100 parking spaces, gym space, and some retail space. Their total project cost is estimated to be $27,747,000 with $11,660,000 in Tiff-eligible expenses. And we are looking at a reimbursement in the amount of $10,678,281, which is 100% of the Tiff increment. And the reason for that is due to the scope and the magnitude of this being the first significant new residential build in the Warehouse District. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This sounds like a wonderful project. But sometimes I can't help but keep myself from beating a dead horse. This really looks like tax abatement. And it's the same as tax abatement. Except that with tax abatement, the city is not as involved. In a Tiff, the city's all over the project. I'll be voting for this. But it seems as though we have an allergy to a market-driven tax-abatement program in our city in favor of Tiff districts, Tiff projects that... Okay, so thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And I will move for approval.
Oh, great. Is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Gordon Young. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm very excited about this project. So thank you to those involved making this significant investment in our downtown Warehouse District. Just to clarify any questions regarding the reimbursement schedule of the Tiff, when will that begin for this project?
It won't begin until both projects are completed.
Thank you. And do we know when this Tiff is set to expire?
That was 2043, I think, was the last payout.
So some other opportunities from additional investment as well, too, then. So hopefully, this will be the beginning of additional investments in this area. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would just like to echo the sentiment of Councilmember Allen. This is fantastic. I just had one question with, and I was trying to take notes. Parking, how many, how much did you say we would have enough to accommodate?
It does meet the minimum standards for that area. So for the apartments, it was 109. And for the condos, it was, I think it's in there. And our, Mark Wagner from Wagner Properties, he's the developer. He is here. Thirty-nine, about 39 parking spots for the condos.
Well, I'm excited. This is wonderful. I think this is going to do an awful lot in terms of the economic impact that it's going to have downtown. And I, with that, Madam Mayor, if nobody's made a motion, I would gladly like to make a motion.
We are getting a motion in a second.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm excited. This is a wonderful project.
I'm just as excited. This is going to be a great addition to Peoria, Peoria Warehouse District, Peoria downtown area. So thank you for your investment. Appreciate it. Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this, Ms. Debbie. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. We wish you much success.
Madam Clerk?
Twenty-four dash twenty-nine is a communication from the City Manager and Finance Director Comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended November 30, 2023, an audited financial report.
I am. Our Finance Director has a new addition in homes. So he is not going to be here tonight for the presentation. So just very quickly with regards to this monthly financial report, this is through November. Their revenues are showing as being down 7%, but that was anticipated, as we anticipated that we were going to see those coming down. They're still at budget. Expenditures are up 3%, but they're still at pace to be below budget. Across all funds, I think between the timing of capital projects and debt service, we're seeing that we're in a good financial position. But as we look at December, when we pay out our debt service, we should see a big jump in some of the expenses going out across all funds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just got a comment. I mean, I know a lot of us around the horse should like to lead by example. I'm just, I'm a little disappointed that our city council and our city manager's budget are way over what we said we were going to have. It's 130% and 183%. So there's no question there. But I'm just disappointed that we're not leading by example. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Madam Clerk? Unfinished business?
I'm sorry. We need a motion on this, I believe.
Oh, receiving and file. Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. We do not have any items. So then we would be on to new business.
New business, I'm going to start out with a recognition that Peoria City Councilmember Andre Allen was selected as a delegate to the, to National Convening. This is called Local Government 2020. Councilmember Allen was selected as one of 13 elected city and council official delegates to attend Local Government 2030, Action for Future, a national convening of practitioners and elected officials January 26 through 27, 2024 at Phoenix Campus of Arizona State University. Mr. Allen was selected from city and county official applicants nationwide to participate. The elected official delegates will join 50 local government practitioners delegates, all under age 40, from cities, counties, and regional councils, the charge of the delegates to break silos and create groundwork for change. Just a quote from a member of the convening organizing committee. "We are honored to have Councilmember Allen as part of this important initiative to help chart the course for the future of local governments. The delegates will leave Phoenix with a blueprint for change." Congratulations, Councilman Andre Allen. We're proud to have you represent Peoria. Anything you have to say about that?
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I truly appreciate it. It's an honor and a privilege to represent the city of Peoria at the convening. I'm sorry that I will leave the ice and snow behind for sunny Phoenix, Arizona, here in a few days, but you all have my regards here. And I promise to give my best foot forward and represent the city of Peoria and look forward to bringing back some things that we can implement to move our city forward. Thank you. And also want to give a shout out to our Assistant City Manager, Kimberly Richardson, who is a part of the convening planning committee. She is a rock star in local government. If you do not know, she is known in all spaces and places, locally and throughout this country. So I definitely want to give her a big shout out and her flowers. We have an amazing rock star in our City Manager's office. Thank you.
Thank you. Other new business, Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in my redundant mode. I would just like to congratulate Councilman Allen. I resent the fact that I'm way too old to go. But congratulations, sir. And bring some of that weather back with you, would you please? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. If there's no more new business, let's go on. Madam Clerk?
We are at Citizens Opportunity to Address the City Council, and we had one card tendered.
Okay, Mr. Chris Hamrick. Can you approach the podium, please?
Good evening. My name is Chris Hamrick, and I'm here because some time ago, the city failed to repair its culvert, and it flooded my neighborhood, flooded my home. I repaired my home, but the city also did not repay me for those costs. I've been a lifelong Peoria resident, and, but I'm not a very political person. This is the first council meeting I've been to. I was aware of the five-minute restriction. I've got something that's about seven minutes. But after being here this evening, I also wanted to commend everyone here. Public has a pretty bad perception of government in general. And what I witnessed tonight was a group of people with Peoria and its citizens at the forefront of its decision-making. And I just wanted to say from my point of view, no matter what our potential discrepancies are, I appreciate it. So I wanted you, the council, to hear the facts, what happened, just from me specifically. So on April, in April of 2020, during COVID, the culvert next to my home, it flooded the street. It flooded, and it eroded ground. I called the city a month later. Jim Sharp called me back. City employee told me that the culvert was in need of repair, but it wasn't in the budget, and it was COVID, so there wasn't anyone to repair the culvert. Over the next year, I kept in touch with Jim, advising him on the ground erosion and advising him also on, or asking him, actually, when the culvert would be repaired. So in March of 2021, I called Jim and told him, the erosion is much worse. It's 45 feet long. It's five feet wide. It's 15 feet deep at its deepest point. And it's dangerous to my family. It's dangerous to the kids in the neighborhood. A week later, folks came out, and they agreed with me. They told me that they were going to advance the repair of that culvert to ahead of 200 other projects and repair it May, end of May, 2021. May 9th and May 18th, it rained. The street flooded. The culvert failed. My yard flooded. My driveway flooded. My garage flooded. My basement flooded. It surrounded my home. It trapped my family and I in the home. And I noticed the flooding in the basement on May 9th, called Jim immediately on his cell phone and told him, you just flooded my house. So the next day, May 10th, my insurance company came out and did a partial assessment of the damage the city had just done to my home. And the reason it was partial is because I didn't have coverage for damage to my house caused by the city. I had coverage for a broken sump pump. So they did a partial assessment so I could get $10,000, and I got $10,000. May 18th, during the second flood, I spent some time in my yard with Jim and asked him, what am I going to do? This isn't my fault. And he told me, it isn't your fault, and the city should pay for it and to file a claim with Sedgwick. So I told him I would repair my property and file the claim. And I also asked him to look at my driveway. My driveway was buckled. And he said he doesn't know if the driveway was caused, the driveway buckling and damage was caused by the flood. But he asked me to reach out to one of his employees, works for the city, who was on-site during May 9th, saw the flood, and has a side concrete business. That's Murillo Concrete. And Jim's son works for Murillo Concrete as well. So that's exactly what I did. I had Javier Murillo come out. He told me he was there during the flood. He knows the flood ruined the base of my driveway, and it had to be replaced. He also wrote a letter, basically, to that effect. So I hired him to replace the driveway. So it took a while to repair everything. It was COVID. It's difficult to hire a contractor. It was expensive. I turned in all of my receipts to Sedgwick in April of 2022. I phoned them. I phoned Tanya Ball over and over and over again. I emailed her, didn't hear from her. So I, in August, months later, I called the city to speak with Mr. Yurk, and I got Ed Hopkins, who told me Tanya would call me back the next day. She did apologize to me for her being unprofessional. And she told me that the reason it was taking so long to respond is because the city didn't respond to her request for the investigation. No contact at all. So by September, I'd had it, and I emailed her and said... So by September, I'd had it, and I emailed her and said, "Pay this claim by the end of the year, or I'm going to sue the city." So I, I've never heard from Tanya Ball since August of 2022. So January through June of 2023, I tried to hire an attorney to sue the city, but the statute expired. That's when I learned the statute was one year instead of two years. The statute expired, no one would take the case. I attempted to hire an attorney as recently as last week, same situation. In August through October of 2023, Mr. Allen and I conversed many times, and he told me he'd get to the bottom of the situation. The result of that is I received a denial letter from Mr. Hayes. You can read the letter yourselves, but it basically says, "You can't sue us, so we're not going to pay." The statute had expired. So after years of warnings by my neighbors and I, Peoria chose not to fix the culvert before it damaged my property. And now Peoria has refused to repay me for the damages it caused.
You can take 30 more seconds only, Mr. Hamrick.
That's all I need. According to Jim, Peoria didn't repair the culvert because it wasn't in the budget, and it was COVID-19. So do you think it's right that Peoria gets a pass because of those things and I don't? So Peoria wasn't required to act expeditiously, but I have to sue in accordance, strict accordance to the statute with no consideration for my budget or COVID. And I'm here tonight to ask this council to reconsider, to either pay my claim or tell the statute, "Let me sue the city," and let's, let's see what the court thinks is fair. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Co, thank you, Mr. Hamrick.
Thank you.
We have an executive session.
I would like to invite a motion to adjourn and to convene in closed session immediately following adjournment of the city council meeting pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C1 to discuss the employment of legal counsel for the city pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/CC2C11 to discuss pending improbable or imminent litigation and pursuant to the Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 120/2C21 for approval by the body of closed minute, closed session minutes and for the semi-annual review of closed session minutes. And seconded by Councilmember Valpula, Madam Clerk.
Who, who made the original motion? I apologize.
Councilmember Seer.
So we just need a, a vote, correct?
Roll call.
Mayor Ali?
Yes.
Councilmember Allen? Councilmember Seer? Councilmember Gordon Young? Councilmember Grab? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Euler? Councilmember Regenbach? Councilmember Valpula?
Yes.
And Councilmember Vespa?
Yes.
It passes unanimously, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We adjourned to closed session. Thank you for your service.